I'll have folks stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. And Ms. Daly, I'll have you read your script.
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your name and comment into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand or by dialing *9 on your phone. You will be given five minutes to speak. Please do not place your call on speakerphone. You will be called on to speak. When ready, please state your name. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Okay, just let folks know that again, as Ms. Daly said, you get a little more time today if you want to speak to us about the budget or the budget process. There will be an opportunity at the regular meeting at 7:00. There'll be another Audience to Visitor, traditional Audience to Visitor, where you can be talking to us about any issue relating to the district that you'd like. Just as in those Audience to Visitor, at this time, at 4:30, Mr. Lockhart will raise a card asking you to wind up. He'll then hold it up at the 5-minute mark and keep holding it up. And at that point, really try to wind down your remarks. So is there anyone, first of all, who's in the boardroom here who'd like to address the board regarding the budget or budget process? Come down, sir.
This works. George Slate, 74, Ethan Drive. I went back through some old notes, went to the town clerk's website. 2016, we had two referenda. 2015, five. 2013, four. 2018, the voters never approved a budget. 2021, we never got a chance with COVID to approve a budget. All of that is the backdrop to the April 24, 2023 Town Council meeting where Councillor Elveld noted, based on information provided to him, that a house with a valuation of $140,000, the projected increase for the upcoming year, $763, up from $4,800. And that included a 5% spending increase on the town side. And my understanding is that those calculations were based on a 30% increase in the residential. Going forward, October 30, 2023, Finance Committee meeting, it's indicated that it's a 50% increase. I reran my revaluation numbers that I had given to the council in May. Two of you, three of you have received those calculations. And it looks like 19% is what the increase will be on taxpayers or residential property, assuming no spending increase. My guess is we will not pass that and we will not have a second vote on the budget. Since you are the education group in town, I don't know how you do it. Mike Swift, the longtime reporter for The Current, I asked him when we were doing Rational Balance, can you write up a story about revaluation or explain? He says, no, too complicated. Revaluation is one word. The right word is reallocation. But nobody cares about that word when money is coming out of their pocket and the increase is going to be 19%. But good luck with that. I hope you take that task on. The only charge I can give you is, for the past fiscal year, fiscal '23, town had a $7.2 million projected surplus. No matter what you do, please, zero is what you add to the surplus for the current fiscal year. Spend it all because it ain't coming back to you later on. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board? Ms. Daly, is anyone online?
There is one attendee, but no hands raised. And at this point in time, there are no comments in the Q and A feature. The one person did just join, so they might not be aware that we are in Audience to Visitors.
Do you sort of reiterate that?
You can reiterate it.
Why don't I reiterate it? It sounds like someone may have...
Someone may have entered online. We are in the public forum on the budget. We have up to five minutes to address the board. So if there's somebody who would like to address the board during the public forum on the budget and has something to say regarding the budget or the budget process, please raise your hand or somehow indicate that you would like to speak to the board.
Mary, you did have your hand raised for a moment. Would you like to speak?
Okay, it doesn't appear... The hand was raised for a split second and then put down. So I'm going to take them back out. And there are no... There are no comments and no attendees with their hands raised.
Without objection, then I'm going to close the public forum.
Move to adjutant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Do we know how Ayana, Ms. Taylor, voted? Yeah, okay. Motion carries. Let's see if I can do the math here. 8-0-0. We adjourned at 6:41. Regular board meeting will start at 7:00. At this point, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements. And I don't see anything listed. Dr. Hill, is that correct for tonight? Next item is Audience to Visitor. And Ms. Daly, it's all yours.
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your name and comment into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand or by dialing *9 on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. You will be called on to speak. When ready, please state your name. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Okay. For people in the audience, at the 2:30 mark, Mr. Lockhart will raise a red card briefly to start having you wind up your remarks. At the 3-minute mark, he'll hold it up. And at that point, really try to finish your remarks. For people who may be online, who can't see the red card, at the 3-minute mark, Mr. Lockhart will interrupt you to say, to finish up your remarks. Is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board?
Looks like I won't have to sign in. Again, George Slate, 74, Ethan Drive. Regarding your FAFSA Agenda Item 1, if you're going to do that, make sure, A, they also understand the Connecticut tax benefits of CHET, up to $870 a year for five or 10 years for one child. Two, that they fully understand Form 8863, the education credit, $2,500 a year for five years. I'm here to talk about two analogies. This is why I sent the comment to the council regarding the $109,000 you spent for remediation for OE. For Mr. Lockhart and Mr. Panos, you lived through the reconsideration for Marlon James. Mr. Lockhart, you realized in the midst of that, oh, your problem isn't with his selection, it was the process. That's my problem with the OE remediation. You didn't do an RFP. Talking to Danielle this morning. Now, sorry, there was one of the bids more than $12,000. You decided to bypass your own rules. That's the Marlon James analogy. Second analogy is picture of Dorian Gray. Yeah, I look fine. I give bad advice to people. I do bad things. I look fine. The pictures don't look that good. That's what you guys are doing to yourselves. I guess the two phrases are, do as I say, not as I do. And if you don't learn from history, you will repeat it. And you repeated it. I don't have a problem with the expenditures. You just decide you don't need to follow your own rules. So to me, I don't know how you ever go through a disciplinary process when you tell a student, you've got to follow the rules. But it's okay if we don't. Yes, rank has its privileges.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Christine Chinney. I am an attorney. My office is in Simsbury, and I represent Dr. Terrell Hill. I am here to address Agenda Item 7D. First and foremost, I want to make you aware that the only possible legal executive session purpose for this item is personnel matters. And as you also know, personnel matters are not privileged to executive session. The person who is the subject of the discussion here tonight, Dr. Hill, has the right to insist that the matter be discussed in public. And on his behalf, as his counsel, I am telling you now, he will insist on that. So that's the first thing. Second thing is, during any public session that does ensue, if any member or members of the board make defamatory statements with regard to Dr. Hill, and by that I mean statements they know to be false, Dr. Hill will avail himself of all possible remedies under Connecticut law. Finally, if you do not accede to Dr. Hill's wishes and proceed with the illegal executive session, we will be filing a complaint with the Foreign Information Commission, and we will be seeking civil penalties for a willful violation because I've now told you it's a violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers who'd like to address the board? Seeing and hearing none. Is there anyone virtual, Ms. Daly, who'd like to address the board?
At this time, there are no attendees with their hands raised and there are no comments in the Q and A feature.
Okay, without objection, I'll close Audience to Visitor. Audience to Visitor is closed. Next item is the Consent Agenda. And there are four items on that. Are there any that either side, that someone wants to have pulled? Looking and seeing, hearing none. So Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approved Consent Agenda Items 4A Financial Report, 4B Enrollment Report, 4C Food Service Report, and 4D Human Resources Report.
Second.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Looking to see if there's any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Okay. Notice that Ms. Taylor said aye. Vice President Taylor, who's virtual, said aye. So the vote carries 9-0-0. Next item is approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the minutes from November 21, 7:00 p.m. regular meeting, the December 7, 2023 Policy Committee meeting, and the December 12, 2023 Long Range Planning Committee.
Before I entertain a second, is there anything that needs to be pulled from that?
I think so.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos for the approval of minutes, the regular meeting of November 21, the policy meeting from the 7th, and long-range planning from the 12th. Is that the other way around? I think it was policy was the 7th. Well, that's what it says. Okay.
That's right.
That's right. Sorry. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Motion carries 9-0-0. Now with the Student Representative Report.
First, I want to start off, as we kick off our winter sports season, I wish all athletes good luck in their practices, performances, and all the teams hope they have a good season. As far as some of the student activities going on, we just had our choir and orchestra performances, which featured a variety of groups and soloists. Really great performances all around, if you guys got to see them. But they were excellent to watch. In addition to these two concerts, we also have our Windsor High School Band Concert this Thursday, which will feature the symphonic and jazz ensembles. So that'll be a good show to watch. And we'll also have some fundraising to support the band program. And also, speaking of fundraising, the senior class has taken a lot of initiative to gather funds to support activities later in the year, such as prom and outing. So thanks to all of those who have planned and supported those events. And our, thanks to our Class Advisory Committee as well, Committee as well, for planning those things. Our class council has given students the opportunity to run for positions, including president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary. So congratulations to those who are running and also those who are voted to the council. The last thing I'd like to add, as we wrap up the week before break, I want to wish everyone happy and safe holidays and good luck to all students with the exams when we resume the end of the first semester.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding the report that our student representative gave? Ms. Cantor.
Thank you. I would just like to comment on if you could speak a little bit louder because you're all the way on the other side of the room and I'm having difficulty hearing you at a lot of the board meetings. And I'm leaning forward to try and hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, as we've said before, if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to stay. But as a student, and I'm sure still things going on for this current year, please feel free. And we always welcome your input as we had your predecessors' input, getting the students' point of view. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Glad to see many here in the room have taken us up on the optional dress code tonight. So thank you. It is a festive time of the year. You have too, sir.
He doesn't look very festive.
He's wearing a red card.
Oh.
December 4, I attended a Town Council meeting. And it was great to see a number of Board of Education members there as the topic of OE had come up and we knew that was on the agenda. So thank you, Mr. Panos, Ms. Cantor, Mr. Wallison, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Lockhart. And Mr. Lockhart was also there to add his expertise as someone who spent a lot of time at Ellsworth. And I thank Mr. Panos as well. It's great having two people who know a lot more about HVAC systems and the like than myself. And on that agenda included money that the town was going to spend, including monies that the board spent, which is not in our budget. The town, I don't want to say has deep pockets because we got revaluation coming, but we clearly don't have extra money to spend for things that were necessary to spend for students and staff that were not within our budget. And also, it was great to hear that things are moving forward. Many of us have other thoughts about maybe what could have been done in lieu of what was done. But I know for staff, parents, and for our students in Oliver Ellsworth, it was an important step forward when we look to where we are now and what we have hoped for the start of next school year. December 6, I attended the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAEB, new board member and leadership training. Thanks, James, for attending. And Mr. Lockhart was front and center as president of the board, doing a myriad of things, moderating, leading, speaking. James, thanks for jumping in when there was a problem with the audio system as well. Again, nice to have some other technical people with skills beyond mine. So he's now known throughout CAEB. Anything AI comes up, that's your person. I actually got pulled myself into a session where they needed another panelist. And that was interesting, let's just put it that way. Last Thursday, I attended the Windsor High School Choir Concert. It was great, as always, led by Dr. White. Unfortunately, I missed Dr. Pierce in the orchestra. I'm hoping to attend Mr. Monroe and the band concert this Thursday. Those are always just great, fun events. And to see our many talented students that we have is always great. I attended the Sage Park in Richmond Expo, which again, is always great to see things beyond the classroom that our kids can be involved in, that we offer here in Windsor. And many different things, including initially starting with several dance proceedings and also some photography that Ms. Daly may know something about. I guess her daughter was in the photography group. Please, everyone, enjoy the holiday time. If you hopefully have some time off, recharge the batteries. Thank you to all the staff in Windsor schools, in particular, Dr. Hill here and his staff in our central office, especially with things that we've been dealing with that's taken away from working on, to me, SEL and achievement, but things we need to do as a board. And that is focusing on the mold issue with Oliver Ellsworth as well as the many busing issues we've had this past year. It's been great that, again, the board members have taken up the gauntlet of us being more wary and watchful of things the Town Council does, attending CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, as well as Public Building Commission meetings. And as I've noticed myself, when we look at some of the items, the majority of items on their committee list are Board of Education initiatives or buildings. I know there's been appointed members now of the Joint Town Council and Board Meeting. And I know there's a hope that we'll be meeting starting in January. That's my report. I don't know if there's any questions anyone has. Mr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for noting the board's actions with the Public Building Commission as well as the Town Council. I just want to bring a point of clarity of what was said tonight. This body did not approve of waiving the bid process. That is not a function of the Board of Ed. That is a function of the Town Council. And that is where the... It was a timing factor, as discussed in the PBC, so that the unit could be built in an 18- to 20-week lead time. And the vendor that made the recommendation was tasked with looking at all different vendors to find a custom-made unit for that building and to be able to hit the ground running. So that was not... The BOE had no part of that process. And I believe that Mr. Panos, to my left, could actually back me up on that. So I just want to make sure I put that out for the public.
I appreciate that. We often do not comment on Audience to Visitor. But when there's something out there that we believe is erroneous information, I think this was appropriate to comment on it. Mr. Panos, do you have any?
No, I don't have anything to add to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is policy adoption. Looking for a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve P 5112, Age of Attendance, P 6148, Policy to Improve Completion Rates of the Free Application for Federal Students Aid... And P 6200, Adult/Continual Education as a first reading.
Motion made by Mr. Wallison. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wallison, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? This is a first reading.
Did he mention all four? Did he say that 1, 2, 3, 4?
You mentioned...
I thought I heard him.
Yes, I did mention all four.
Yeah.
You did all four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Did we hear Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Didn't hear you. I apologize. Motion carries 9-0-0. Next item is school liaison reports. I'll start. Ms. Taylor, do you want to chime in here? We usually defer to you first.
No, Megan has it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would just start by saying sadly, I was not able to attend the choral concert that passed by. But from what I've seen online, because we do such an amazing job promoting here at Windsor, was nothing short of amazing performances from our students. I even saw Representative Khan's daughter had a solo. And it was right on the front page of the social media. So it was nice to see, you know, all the kids doing well. I believe as our student rep has just mentioned, winter sports have started... Sorry, I'm not going to read this wrong. But download the GoFan app for tickets. Is that what we're doing here? Right? I do. Sounds good to you? So come on out and enjoy a game and see how talented our students are.
Thank you. Any questions for the high school? I do, I would be remiss in not saying, when you mentioned the concert and Mauricia, Ms. Khan's daughter, that there was a spotlight. One of the seniors, the seniors get an opportunity to write in to Dr. White about why they might want to have a solo. And she picks students who, in general, have been with her for four years. And there were, everyone this year was a four-year student who was selected. And there was one young lady named White, named Hill. one young lady named White, named Hill, that recognized the last name, I don't know, but she did a wonderful job. Going on to Sage Park, let me start with Mr. Panos.
I also attended the clusters there, it was quite interesting to see the crafts that she has. A lot of it looked like fun, some of it had my photo taken, it was bad. They had some of the slimy stuff that they were working on, and had jewelry and so... And they had some sort of, somewhere where they were making like with a glue gun, they were making three-dimensional objects, you know, mazes or whatever, so it was interesting. I also attended the PTL meeting, that was quite interesting, and Mr. Rano was there too. Now, there were, so there were, there were a couple of, there were just a few parents, but both were quite enthusiastic, and it looks like they have a president and that they're going to move forward and try to build up that organization anew. Principal Jorgensen just gave a review, I thought it was very interesting, of the progress at the, at the school, and she noted that there were some difficulties in the reading scores, but it was, I thought it was a very good presentation. So, that, looking forward to that next one. Other than that, you know, we have the usual concerts and things of this nature to look forward to, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Richmond, but I heard lots of really good things from it, from some of my neighbors, and I saw some great pictures. The one thing I just want to articulate, just piggybacking on Mr. Panos there, is the PTO is looking for folks, they are a little light right now, so if there are parents out there that want to get involved, it would be really awesome, please reach out, and that's it.
Thank you. Any questions regarding Sage Park? Okay, the next is Clover Street School.
Hey.
Mr. Madison?
Yes. Hi, Mrs. Lee. Hey, we're connected on email, and I'm scheduled to go to the PTO meeting starting in January, so I'll catch up with you. Thank you.
Any questions for Clover? Mr. Lockhart?
Hi, Mrs. Lee. I know. Mr. Madison, you got a great school, great principal. I do want to connect with you, there was some open-ended stuff that some of the staff wanted me to work on as their liaison, and I was quite active trying to help solve some stuff there, and I don't want to leave it hanging, so for the record, I just want to let you know, I want to connect with you, and some of the concerns that would be craved for us to follow upon as a board.
Awesome, thank you.
And Ms. Lee, I'll have you know that Leonard really wanted to do both schools, but I said, no, you have to pick one that you'd like, and it was good that James is already well-aware and been active at Clover, so that works out very well.
They don't want competition.
Any questions regarding Clover? Any other questions? No. Great. JFK, Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I'm reporting on the art class that they had. Ms. Lloyd is a spectacular teacher. The students decorated a tree for Christmas, and the Christmas tree was sent to Wadsworth Athenaeum on display, and it was immediately purchased, right away. It was so beautiful. They filled their canoe for the fundraiser, they raised 540 pounds of food that was donated to the Windsor Food Bank. On December 15th, they hosted the Windsor High School Band for a winter performance. Thank you to Mr. Monroe and again to Dr. Pierce, great job. The lost and found items are located in the cafeteria, the items that are not picked up by December 22nd will be donated. The school store opens on January 8th, that hasn't been opened in quite some time. Friday, December 22nd is an early dismissal, December 25th through, 25th through the 29th is winter break, classrooms resume on Tuesday, January 2nd. Starting in January 2024, there's going to be a new program that will be implemented. Once a month on a Friday, students will participate in their selected fun activity. These activities consist of a wide range of exciting opportunities, and this will happen on January 26th. And then to the audience, I'd like to wish belated Happy Hanukkah, shalom, Merry Christmas, aloha, melikimaki to my friends and colleagues on the beautiful Hawaiian Islands. That's also a hymn from JFK. And Happy Three Kings Day, Feliz Dia de los Reyes, and Happy New Year to all. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions regarding John F. Kennedy School? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Lockhart, Oliver Ellsworth?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I've been active in that school at least two days a week, really just making sure stuff is okay, and really watching the dynamic of the staff and how they're interacting and how they're reacting to all the issues and the tension around the mold issues within the building and making sure that they feel supported by the board in regards to our actions and try to address the situation in a very ethical manner. And I've built a great relationship with Mr. Gruber, and I got several classes that have become my classes I got to go see at all times, Ms. D, I have to go see Ms. Miller's class. I know probably like 50 kids by first-name basis now, so it's been a labor of love. Going to continue to be in that building throughout until the solution has been placed on the building, and looking forward to welcoming them back on the first day of school for the next academic year. With a solution on that building, that's going to be something better than's currently on it, so... And other than that, happy holidays to all of the OE staff, truly appreciate you.
Thank you. Any questions regarding Oliver Ellsworth? Okay, Paquonic School, Mr. Hallic?
Thank you, Mr. President. I met with Principal Mahalco on, on, on a Friday. We toured the school together. I got to see that he has a great rapport with his students, teachers, and staff. I was very impressed by that. Last week was a spirit week. The kids seemed to have a great time with that, and Friday was a plaid day, and I happened to be wearing a plaid shirt that day, so I fit right in, which was awesome. And Santa Claus paid a visit during a recess on that same day, so the kids I heard were very excited about that. As you know, Paquonic is an old building, but it does seem, from just walking around the building, it does seem to be in pretty good shape. You know, we discussed that they may, they may need a few more classrooms there, but for the most part, things are going very well there. Also, a couple items for the budget that he mentioned, that Principal Mahalco mentioned was possibly getting another set of lockers for pre-K and a, and a partial fencing just to usher up the playground and make sure that that's safe, so I'm hoping to have that discussion as we move forward during the budget season. Next week is a dress and guess week. Students can, can dress up and choose a theme, and other students will guess what they're going to be, or what they are. They're also having a holiday sing-along on Friday of this week, and that's at 10:00 a.m. in the gym. Winter break will be, will be starting on Monday, 12/25, and run through January 1st, 2024. And the next PTO meeting, which I'm planning on attending, is on January 8th, 2024, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the library, and childcare is available for students of school age. And January 9th is a teacher development, development day. Also want to thank Principal Mahalco and his staff for showing me around. They were very, very good to me, allowing me to talk to some of the students and the staff there. And actually, one, one student, I believe it was in a second-grade class, asked me what a school liaison was, so I got to tell them about that. So, I thought that was great as well. And I just want to say, happy holidays and season's greetings to everyone out there, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Paquonic? Paquonic is a great school, and, you know, I don't know anybody who may be going there in the next couple of years or so. Mr. Panos?
I'd just like to propose that we move item 7D to after 9, committee reports.
Is there a second to that? I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Panos to move item 7D after 9, committee reports. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries 900. We are now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the December coffee talk was held this morning here in the boardroom. Great turnout. We had a focus this morning particularly on the kindergarten waivers and the new rules, or law rather, around kindergarten admission, and we also had Ms. Mary Cristofaro, our new director of PSES, speak to families about those particular matters and areas in, you know, in our schools and, you know, how we're going to move forward and what she's looking for, just a general overview of what she's doing with her department here in the district. As of this morning, we have 27 waiver requests submitted for the new kindergarten age requirement. Families who have submitted a waiver request are getting contacted by the school to schedule the assessment. Determination letters will be sent out approximately 14 days after the assessment is completed. I would like to wish all of our families, staff, and the community members the best of the holiday season. Schools will be closed, as you've heard a few times, so I won't keep repeating that, but this Friday, folks go home, and you come back on January 2nd. Unplug, I'll just say that, because I will. And also, before we unplug though on Thursday, it'll be the finale of our music department. I had the opportunity to do a podcast with all three members of our, well, three of the four members of our music department, Dr. Pierce, Dr. White, and Mr. Monroe. So, Dr. Pierce has already had his strings winter concert, Dr. White's already had her choral winter concert, and this Thursday, Mr. Brandon Monroe will have the band winter concert. So, I know it's going to be great, I've been to the first two as I go each year, and so I know this one is not going to disappoint, and I'm encouraging members of the community to come out and support. I think Mr. Monroe has done a great job with our band in just two years, he's growing it, and not just growing it, but the students are really performing at another level, so come out and support them. And do you want me just to move on, Mr. President, or are you going to call the next item?
Why don't we ask if there's any questions on what Dr. Hill has covered today? Seeing no questions, yes, move on.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Batsholder to take over for, she has the next three agenda items, 8A, 8B, and 8C.
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education accept for a second reading the budget assumptions for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, I met with Dr. Hill and Ms. Batsholder. I did express any concern that were maybe presented to me at the time of that meeting and to be in preparation of the budget presentation. The meeting went quite well. Just for the record, I think there was only one submission to me that I took to Dr. Hill. We understand that this is a reeval year, we understand, I expressed to Dr. Hill on behalf of the board that this is a, we're facing a fiscal cliff with the ESF funds, and that the board would like to see what it looks like to absorb everything that was funded by the ESF funds into the budget, and that it would be, we both would, well, excuse me, let me take that back. It was my expression to him that this would be a very robust budget with everything in it, and it would have to be some hard decisions made by the board, and that I encouraged him as the finance chair to put forth a very robust budget that's going to maintain where we are and continue to move the school district forth, with the understanding, once he presents the budget, the budget becomes the property of the board, and then we deliberate on what we want to send to the town council. So, I did ask him also to provide, historically, we ask every year, to provide that 1%. If you had a magic bucket of what 1% looks like, if you could add it, what does that look like, so that it can be for consideration of this board as we deliberate. So, just for transparency, that was what I discussed with him the last time we met.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding budget assumptions? Seeing none, we'll go to the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstention, motion carries 900. Next item is for Ms. Batsholder, I guess, update on mold and buses.
So, I won't reiterate everything that was already said about OE, there's no update currently this week. The humidity level is, today it was at 26, so all the rain yesterday pushed it up a little. And there is no, nothing more to report on busing, and we actually have been doing quite well over the past month or so. We have had very little issues or calls from parents.
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Batsholder regarding either of those items? Looking for a motion for 8C?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education accept the proposed 2024, 2025, and 2025, 2026 school calendar for a first reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstention, motion carries 900. Okay. We are back to, remember, I... Committee reports.
Yes, sir.
And we did have two committee meetings, so I'll first go to Anthony about long-range planning.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the Long Range Planning Committee met on the 12th. We discussed two items, one was some vocational and technical training questions that Mr. Hallic had brought forth that we're going to refer through, back to the president, to the curriculum committee. And then the other item that we discussed in detail was the state of our school buildings and a five-to-10-year plan on approaching them that we've begun kind of a fact-finding for, where we'll start looking at kind of various scenarios between renovating, remediation, and complete rebuilds. We anticipate that that is going to be quite a bit of work that we're going to start moving forward on, working with Dr. Hill and his staff, and the intention and the outcome is to eventually come to a consensus and a plan that we'll submit to the board and then eventually to the town council. But stay tuned for the next meetings on that, there's going to be a series of those as we get to the new year, and that was about it.
Questions regarding long range? The only comment, I know I had seen an article just in the paper the other day about a new school and going through that process, and the good thing is, as I also mentioned at the meeting, there are many districts that have gone through recent renovations as well as new buildings, and I know both Jody and Nick at CAEB are more than willing to help us to also identify other, other buildings so that we have an idea of a process that we need to take kind of technically, and obviously working with the town council and the community, because you're going to need community buy-in for, for the type of thing that we could be looking for, and a lot of it's going to be, you know, there was mentioned, Jeremy mentioned about Paquonic looking good, I know there's been some interest on the town council to have the town manager take a look at all buildings, all public buildings in Windsor, to look at that, so that we know, do some buildings that we may just be able to do, you know, certain renovations to, others, do we have to... Others, do we have to renovate to new? Others, do we really have to do a new building? Do we really need the current configuration of buildings? Do we, could we go to a smaller number of schools, larger schools, or do we go to more schools? So there's a lot of things to be looking at, and we know this is, because it's in long-range planning, this is not something that's gonna be done in a short period of time. And I thank you for that meeting. Any other questions for long range? Mr. Wallaston, do you want to say anything about policy?
We had a pretty good meeting, pretty efficient. We got to it pretty quickly. It was pretty much just regular housekeeping as far as just updating some of the policies we have to be in accordance with the law. I know just looking off of what we have written down here, we were able to add a half credit of personal finance as a graduation requirement. And we also had a public act that amended the requirement for students to complete that one-credit mastery-based diploma assessment to be to the discretion of the Board. And I know Dr. Hill did speak about how it was kind of recently implemented and some of the challenges that came with that broad of a graduation requirement. It was hard to roll out. So it was a pretty good meeting overall. Another thing that we did, off the top of my head, we changed the wording for the eligibility. So if a student has a child in school, either parent, according to the new proposed policy, should be allowed to attend adult education. Previously, it was just the mother could. So if either the, a young man or a young lady or either parent decides that they would like to just not go to day school anymore, or one has to go to work or something during the day, and adult education at night to make things work, is kind of the way the law has been updated now. That's pretty much my sum up of how things went in a pretty good meeting.
Any questions for policy? Mr. Lockard, do you want to talk a little bit about finance and what the process is gonna be, both for, for Board members here as well as the public?
Yes, thank you. So what's gonna happen, now that we've approved the Budget Assumptions as a second reading, Dr. Hill and his staff will be crafting the budget. It will be released to us at the January meeting. And then we will begin our process late, late January. I believe the first meeting will be the first, I mean, the last Tuesday in the month of January. And we will meet for several weeks after that with three meetings. Each of those meetings will have a public forum before the start of our deliberation. And then the fourth one, if we require a fourth one, that one does not have a public forum. That is a meeting to just complete our work with the understanding that we're looking to, I believe, approve this budget by the February meeting and be prepared to present it to the Town Council during the month of April. And do it only one time, so we want to be thorough. And we're gonna have to really, really advocate during this process and to revow. And we, as the nine of us, it is our responsibility to advocate for the school system and to advocate for all the things that we need to operate within the school system. And this is gonna, not gonna be an easy budget for us to just slide along and push off on the Town Council. We're gonna be the ones that have to advocate and push and make sure we sell it to the Town Council and sell it during the referendum. So I'm excited about the process. This process, like all the previous ones, this will not be a process where Dr. Hill and his staff will be parroting the book to us. They will be here to answer questions. It will be the expectation of every Board member to be prepared, to come with their questions. Obviously, they will give an executive summary, but to read the book to us, I think no one up here has that desire for that to happen. But we want to make sure that we have, we have great debate up here and to make sure that we sharpen our pencils and make sure everything that's being presented is something that we want as a Board of Education. So I'm looking forward to the process.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, a question. Mr. Lockard, you, you mentioned that you were gonna be asking for a 1% over. Is that what you said, just for, over the?
Your, your, his reach beyond what he may present.
Mr. President, through you, Ms. Panos, you are correct. I did ask him for his 1% wish list, that if he had the ability to tack on another 1% with the Board's support, what would that look like and what would the impact be? So that this Board can actually consider that as well, part of the base budget, as well as if he had, he wanted to push it, he wanted to go on the throttle a little bit harder. What does that look like?
Well, could you equally do a negative 1%?
If that's what you're asking me?
Yes, a little bit of an asky.
Mr. President, if you would like me to do that, I will have no problem asking Dr. Hill to do that.
He's right sitting right there.
Well, I get, I'm the chair, so I get my instructions from the President. So if he instructs me, I will do so.
I guess, yes. I guess if that's acceptable to Dr. Hill, I don't really have a problem with that.
Overwhelming?
So should we also ask for a 2%, what would a 2%? No.
Well, we go up and scale. The scale, the scale only goes up.
Any other questions for Mr. Lockard? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on to, back to Item 7D and looking for a motion at this point.
Is my understanding that he wants to have this an open session? That's okay. I would like to have a discussion, both have a discussion and possible action on parental concern. Having, this refers to Ms. Bean's request for a hearing. So the question is, now, she requested this and sent us some, anyway, I'm speaking to her, I'm sorry. Let me just make the motion that I would like to have a discussion, possible action on parental concern.
And it's our understanding, before I look for a second, that the wish is by Dr. Cook, if this motion is going, Dr. Hill, great. Dr. Hill, that this, if goes forward, that the preference would be to have it in open session. Is, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck. Mr. President? Mr. Lockard?
I object to the consideration of the question.
An objection to the consideration of a question does not require a second, and it's not debatable. It does require a two-thirds vote. And so in this case, a vote of no, and with your parliamentary hat, parliamentarian hat, you may have to help me here. A vote of no means the motion on the agenda will not be considered. So a no vote would mean we don't consider the current motion. A yes vote means we want to hear the agenda item, and in this case, in open session. Is that correct?
It depends on how you make the question, Mr. President. If you make, if you make the question as, shall the question be considered, then yes. A no vote is to not consider, a yes vote is to, is to consider the question.
That, that's my understanding.
Okay, so, so I don't understand, what is, okay, what is the basis, then, for non-consideration?
Do a parliamentary inquiry.
I'm assuming.
Through, Mr. Lockard.
No, no.
There has to be a reason.
No, he went, okay. Mr. President, he's, he's talking through you, so I don't want to.
Okay, there has to be a reason for not considering this. I mean, I haven't even addressed the reason for having the discussion. So I, I think this is unusual and unpopular. Excuse me, excuse me, others are speaking.
Point of, I'm sorry, point of parliamentary inquiry, that's what you would be doing right now. I'm saying point of order, because why are you just randomly talking? Point of parliamentary inquiry, that's what you said before you go.
He did it, I think he said that.
You did not say it.
I think, Mr. I, I think for.
All right, point of parliamentary inquiry is, what is the, what is the basis without even making the motion? Without even speaking to the motion?
The use of an objection to a request is often done if there could be something that could be contentious or something that Board members, if it's, if it's sustained, don't believe should be being discussed. That's the purpose of it.
Okay, so this was suggested, this particular method was suggested by our attorney.
Yes.
So, so that, that's the basis. In other words, this is a legal way, this is an appropriate way to discuss a request for a hearing by.
Right, we're not getting to whether or not it's an, I'm not saying that the objection doesn't have anything to do with its legality of doing such a process. It goes to whether or not we should be discussing this at all. And it does, it does require a two-thirds vote.
All right, I'll, well, I'll, I'll just, for the record, object to this, your interpretation of the, of the Roberts rules on this. And I, you know, maintain my rights to, to bring this back if I, if I can prove otherwise, okay?
Okay. So you have the objection, so again, a no vote means that we will.
Not consider.
Not consider the, the original motion made by, by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck. So all those in favor of?
So just for, Mr. President, if I may?
The other way around. Maybe around, oh, I think maybe it's the reverse.
Mr. Lockard.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Go ahead, take Ayana first, since she's.
Ms. Taylor?
I think this needs to be a roll-call vote.
Okay.
For sure.
So the appropriate question for this, for this body right now is, shall the question be considered? That is the motion. That is your statement, you say to us.
Correct. Should the motion be considered? And again, I, I think I explained that people know what no versus yes means. Okay, Ms. Daly?
Jill Kanter.
Yes.
David Fury.
No.
Jeremy Halleck.
Oh, yes.
Anthony King.
No.
Leonard Lockard.
No.
James Madison.
No.
Paul Panos.
Yes.
Ayana Taylor.
No.
Nathan Wallaston.
No.
Three yes, five no, six no.
So that is a two-thirds vote, and so we will not consider.
Did you say five? No, six.
Six.
She said six, not five.
Three and six.
Thank you, sorry, Mr. Panos.
Sorry, numbers.
So it will not be considered? So at this point, we're moving on to the next agenda item, Other Matters and Announcements. The next Board of Ed meeting is Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, at 6:30 PM, where the Superintendent presents the budget with a public forum and a regular meeting to follow. Other announcements that people may have, we'll start with Mr. Madison, go back and forth here.
All set, thank you.
Mr. King?
Have a nice holiday, everybody.
Ms. Kanter?
Happy holidays.
Mr. Wallaston?
Hope everyone has a blessed and lovely holiday.
Mr. Halleck?
Happy holidays to all.
Mr. Lockard?
Happy holidays to all. Please look out for your fellow man, woman, and child, and please drive safely.
Mr. Panos?
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Ms. Taylor?
Happy holidays and happy New Year's, thank you.
I will say the same, happy holidays to all. Next item is Audience to Visitor, Ms. Daly.
Good evening, this is Robin Daly from the Superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the Board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your name and comment into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the Participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please do not place your call on speakerphone. Once you are called on to speak, please state your name. No comment can be made against the employees of the School District or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the Board at this time.
As I said earlier, first Audience to Visitor, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Mr. Lockard will raise a red card. And then at the three-minute mark, he'll raise it and keep, keeping it raised. And at that point, really try to finish your remarks. For people who are online, at the three-minute mark, Mr. Lockard, if you're still talking, will raise the card and also mention to, to wind up your remarks. Is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the Board? Seeing none, is there anyone online, Ms. Daly?
There's no one with their hands raised, and there are no comments in the Q&amp;A.
Thank you very much. Without objection, I'm gonna close Audience to Visitor, move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Panos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Ms. Taylor? Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Didn't want to have 1-800. Motion carries 900, we are adjourned to 7:58.